Then it would be open. Now, alternatively, if a plan is presented in the future and at some point they present a proposal that requires use of this street and it's open for vehicular pedestrian, that's something in the future that I think should be addressed because that really was the condition precedent for our first meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Jay, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, for Mr. Restrepo from City Staff, I'd be helpful to understand if you think that opening this up would cause some sort of, you know, danger for vehicles and driving and/or pedestrians. And if you have any background on why this was ever closed in the first place, I think that would be helpful for us.
Good evening. This is Benjamin Restrepo from Transportation Mobility, City of Fort Lauderdale. When this vacation came through the city for review, the original review process was with pedestrians in mind. As you know, this area, there's a lot of development going on, being proposed west of Andrews and then also along Progresso Drive between Andrews Avenue and Northeast Third Avenue. So, the idea here was not to allow the vacation, to allow pedestrian movements or pedestrian traffic along Northwest Eighth Street or Northeast Eighth Street, I mean, to get around this triangle. If you're a pedestrian right now and you're on Northeast Eighth Street and Northeast First Avenue, to get around this triangle, the closest path would have been about 500 feet to get to the point on Progresso Drive. So, if you open up the gateways and don't allow the vacation, your pedestrian movement goes from 500 feet to about 100 feet. Now, at the time that the applicant came with the vacation request, they weren't proposing any pedestrian easements or emergency vehicle easements. The applicant now is proposing to provide a pedestrian easement and emergency services easement. So, that mitigates the issue there. Transportation Mobility was not in favor of the vacation strictly for the pedestrian movement crossing or getting from Northeast First Avenue to Progresso Drive.
Jay, are you good?
And Benjamin, is there, in terms of opening this up for vehicles to, you know, alternatively, as a city, if we were allowed this to be opened up to vehicles to continue Northeast Eighth Street through to Progresso Drive, is there a reason that the applicant is stating that that would be dangerous? Do you agree with that assessment? And do you have any background on why this was allowed to be closed off in the first place?
I'll start with the second question. The background for why Northeast Eighth Street was closed, I don't have a background on that. I don't necessarily know. I think it was for storage of vehicles or crossing between the two properties on the north and south side. As far as vehicular, vehicles approaching an intersection, ideally, you'd want the approaches to be at 98 degrees. And if you do have some deflection, you want that deflection to be between 76 and 90 degrees. You don't ever want it to be greater than that. So, yes, closing off Eighth Street at that intersection point, Eighth Street to Progresso Drive, you would be mitigating a potential conflict of crashes.
Jay?
Thank you.
Any other, so we're in the public hearing. What other members of the public wish to speak on this item?
The next speaker that was signed up is Tom Moody. He's on the attendee list and needs to be allowed to speak.
Hi, this is Tom Moody. Am I being heard?
Yes, we can hear you. Three minutes, Mr. Moody.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to start just by letting everyone know, I have no relations with either the people for or against this parcel. I happen to own the property at 725 Progresso. My office is housed here, so I'm very close to the subject. I've been here for four years and I'm speaking tonight in favor of the property being vacated so it can be considered one parcel for the development, future development, because I believe that would be the most beneficial thing for the neighborhood. It clearly has not been an issue with this parcel for practical reasons, you know, being considered part of the homeless property already. I think that sometimes certain, you know, people may have issues with someone being given something, but my thoughts here is that, you know, if this parcel were vacated, then they could begin paying property taxes on it and it would open the door to a more desirable development that would be good for all of us here in the neighborhood. So, I'm very much in support of it and would like to go on record as stating such.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
The next member of the public who signed up is Hernan Gonzalez, who's on the attendee list.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak with the board. I am owner of the property 831 and 833 Northeast Second Avenue. I understand that this street is being closed at the beginning. They have a different, they do an encroachment and they use for a parking. As you know, the city of Fort Lauderdale is doing a very nice change and they want very nice, the city, but right now, the ordinance has changed to high-rise. So, since this is going to be high-rise, this area need more access, more streets to run and to ride across the, all these buildings eventually is going to be a will. So, I don't see any benefit for us closing this street. So, I am not in favor to this homeowner. The city give this piece of land to this company because I don't see any benefit for the community closing this street. At the time, they say it's going to be dangerous, but they can take from Northeast Second Street, they can turn to the right going west on Northeast Eighth Avenue is not going to be dangerous because if they open only one way, it's no problem. Like they say before, that this is like a sharp, sharp right crossing, where the street can come from Northeast Second Avenue and go directly from Eighth Street direct to Andrews past One First Avenue. So, I don't see really what is going to be the benefit for the community of the owners that we're going to build eventually buildings in this area. The only person in benefit of this is only Honda. I don't know them, but I think I am not agreeing with this. So, this is my point of view. I really appreciate the time you give me. If you have any questions, you have my letter, you can contact me and I'm here to help the community to grow. But I am not in favor of closing this street. I want the street open because the street was the encroachment and the encroachment is finished and now we have different ordinances. We need the streets. We need the street to evacuate this. And as you see Progresso, this is a small area and we don't have enough access. And eventually, they're going to close more streets and I don't think it's fair for us.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez. Tricia, do we have any other speakers?
We do not have any other speakers that have signed up virtually and no members of the public are present in the chambers wishing to speak.
Thank you, Tricia. Okay, so I do not have any hands raised, board members, which is the best way to, I do, Mary's hand was raised first. Mary, is this a question or, I see Brad, I see Brad, I would encourage board members to raise their hand. I don't know if you can do that from City Commission chambers, but anyways, Mary was first.
Ms. Moss, can you hear me?
Yes, who is that?
This is John Phillips. I'm with my client, Mr. Coratolo, who signed up to speak.
But, Mr. Phillips, you spoke on his behalf.
No, but he has, he has signed up independently to speak to you also.
But, Mr. Phillips, you spoke on his behalf, so.
I don't think it's.
Madam Chair, I suggest allowing his client to speak.
Fine. Mr. Coratolo has three minutes.
Sir, they can't see. There we go.
Good evening, board members. How are you?
Good, thank you.
I don't want to take too much of your time and repeat some of the things that have been said by Mr. Phillips and some of the other people. I just want to hit a couple of points. I've been in this area for well over 40 years. I own quite a few pieces of property. Some are directly less than 300 feet from the proposed street closing. Two items which I think should be taken under consideration is that in 1987, when this encroachment was given, the zoning was B2 at the time. As you know, it is now Northwest RED, M U N E, which allows mixed-use residential up to 110 feet of height, being that this proposal was put in by the city by Mr., well, I worked on helping to get the zoning taken care of. And to be perfectly honest with you, I see that closing this street creates nothing but a negative impact, not only for my property, but the whole neighborhood. Because if there will be some development in the future, which we know it's coming, more accessibility is going to be very important for the proper use of the neighborhood because we don't have that much, as Mr. Phillips said before, we don't have that many ways to get out of this little triangle. So, please keep in mind, whatever decision you make, that your decision is going to impact the future development of this particular area. And I won't take too much more of your time. I thank you very much for your time and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Coratolo. Mary, you had your hand raised? Can't hear you, Mary. Mary?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay. I had a follow-up question for Mr. Restrepo. Is he there? Is he available?
He's with us. Go ahead.
Okay, so at the end of your conversation, you said something about mitigating crashes. Could you explain that?
The comment about mitigation, mitigating crashes is, one of the ways to mitigate opportunities for crashes is by closing off access, right? And this intersection of Northeast Eighth Street at Progresso Drive is definitely a dangerous angle when you're approaching the intersection specifically when you're trying to make a left turn. So, if this street ends up being vacated, or this portion of the street ends up being vacated, you're reducing the amount of vehicular volumes that would access Northeast Eighth Street and then potentially turning left on Progresso Drive.
Okay, and they could turn left. I visited the site, so I'm just, yeah, okay. So, they could turn left there from this when they, when it's, if it were opened as a street?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I have hands raised in the commission chambers. Do any members of the board in the chambers wish to speak? Brad?
Hi. Are we in discussion or are we just asking questions at this point?
We are, we are both. We are.
Okay. So, I just have a statement, like, so I was, I reviewed this and I'm a little, I'm a little, I'm a little confused as to why the city originally would allow a commercial property to close off a street for use of parking in the first place. And now, use the, and now we come back 30 years later, whatever it is, and now we use the excuse that, hey, this has been closed off for 30 years, so we might as well give it to a commercial property with no pending project on the table. Generally, we see vacations where there's a project on the table, and if they want to vacate an alleyway or a street, the city gets some benefit from that vacating that alley or street. If it's a sidewalk, if it's something that has to do with the community, more trees, something more than, here, you've had this property for 30 years for some deal in the 80s. I have no idea why the city would do that, but it's not the first time I've questioned the decisions of the city. And they give away a piece of property that maybe at the time wasn't that valuable, but now I think we can all agree in that area, the property values have risen quite dramatically. And now, they say, hey, we've had it for 30 years closed off, so we might as well continue closing it off to the public because, just because, it makes more sense without anything pending. I cannot see any reason why this board should allow this property to become, to be given away without any benefit to the city and without any project pending, simply because we've used it for so long that we feel like we should just own it now. And the excuse of that, we're going to give them this property and they're going to start paying taxes on it, I think is a very small consideration because I think the city is going to estimate the taxes on this. They're going to value this property as like $10,000 or $15,000 because it's not buildable. It's a piece of a street. So, the value of this is going to be very little. It's going to be maybe $2,000 or $1,000 worth of taxes a year. I don't see the benefit to the city whatsoever. I don't see a project. And my opinion might change if a project came along that needed to vacate this street and there was a benefit to the city in that there's some sort of, the citizens are getting something for this, be it retail establishment or different things they can attend, or a sidewalk that they can walk down, or beautiful trees that they can see. It just doesn't make any sense to me. So, that's my two cents. I don't see why we would be giving away this street, other than what we've already done in this city, is give away the street for 30 years. I don't know why we don't just say, hey, we want this street back. I think that makes more sense than allowing them to continue to use a street for free without renting, doing a land lease or anything like that, like other properties the city owns by the beach and things like that, that there's 99-year leases where they're actually paying the city. So, I just think this is, this is a request that, to me, DOA.
Okay, thank you. Do we have members of the board in commission chambers wishing to speak on this item?
This is, this is Jay Shackman. I just had some thoughts just to share with the board. I mean, just in sort of, on an aerial view, looking at this entire triangle and access to Progresso Drive, you know, it is pretty clear that that would be the most aggressive angle to enter Progresso Drive as compared to any of the others, with the exception of Ninth Street. And I, we obviously can't say this with certainty, but in the absence of anyone from staff or the applicant or those opposing explaining why this was allowed in the first place, I can't help but wonder if they allowed this because of dangerous driving conditions. But, my other thought, my other final thought is that, if I understand correctly, the applicant is, will require, is also volunteering a perpetual pedestrian easement. Is that right? So, you know, if maybe the city attorney or staff can explain exactly what that would imply on a future redevelopment, but my understanding is that they would have to allow on any sort of redevelopment access for pedestrians through. So, for Mr. Coratolo's concern about pedestrian access to Progresso Drive, I think that addresses that. Finally, I do think that, I had heard mention from the applicant that they have some type of project that they are planning on pursuing. And if I'm not mistaken, they are first pursuing the alley vacation prior because that would be needed in order to pursue that project.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Is there anyone else in commission chambers on the part of the board that would like to speak on this item?
John Baronca.
Hi, John.
Hi. Very quickly, and I totally agree with Jay, totally agree with staff. I think safety is a vast improvement by eliminating that direct connection. You know, I look at that street and it's not a well-traveled street. It's not, you know, a high-traffic area. Anybody who's ever tried to get onto Progresso from one of those side streets knows that those angles, you know, are very difficult to see around. And I think by not having the general public use that, it all makes sense. But, going back to Mr. Cohen's point, I find it very difficult to approve something or, and not knowing what we're going to get. I get the easement, I get the whole pedestrian preservation and maintaining that connection and emergency vehicles, but I'm imagining, what is that going to be? Is that a gate? Is that beautiful landscape? Or is there a parking garage going over and it's just a tunnel, similar to what we have at a library downtown? I don't know. I really would love to see the pretty picture. And I don't know why or what would prevent the applicant from bringing the site plan concurrently to us to basically show us what we're getting because the black and white image that we're seeing of these lines and the words pedestrian preservation easement and emergency vehicle access, it just doesn't do it for me. Now, everything else, I think it's a huge improvement. I don't think it's necessary to have that connection. I also think it's a huge benefit to the community, not from a tax basis, but redevelopment of that blighted site would be a huge windfall for everybody in that area. I think property values, you know, will go up as things redevelop and I think that's the reason we rezone those areas the way we did, to encourage redevelopment and improve the city as a whole. So, couldn't agree with whole idea more, but I sure as heck would have been easy, easier to convince had I seen a pretty picture.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that there is no one else in the commission chambers on the board wishing to speak on this item. Hearing no one, I'm going to move on to Jackie Scott.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I agree with everything really that Brad said and what John said. I think we're in a tough position right now, but I have a huge problem supporting this without knowing what the overall plans are and why would we do this? I feel like it's the cart before the horse. I think that if they're planning a project, I'd be much more in favor of supporting this, knowing what we were getting.
Thank you, Jackie. Coleman?
Thanks, Catherine. Just a quick question, I guess. I'm not sure who its staff would answer this, but if we do not grant this vacation, I assume the encroachment agreement stays in effect and the status quo would remain. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Shari.
But if you don't approve, just make sure that you have a basis that's in the code as to why you don't approve and state that on the record, please.
Thank you. Mary Furtig.
Meant to unmute. I, I'm sorry. I did drive this today and I was glad I did because and listening to Ben's comments, I think there are some potential safety issues here if this were just reopened the way it is today. And if it stays the same with the encroachment, that's one issue to me. If they were just tomorrow to open it up without the city going in and doing something about safety, I think that's a problem. But, in view of Shari's last comments about voting against it, having reasons one way or the other, I'm just looking for the resolution. Shari, did you send us a resolution on this? I think you did. I'm just.
There's no resolution on this because this would be a recommendation that you would be giving to the commission. However, you'd need to state on the record what your basis is for denial.
Mary, just look at page two of the staff report. It lays out.
I know. I've got that here. I know.
Vacations. And I'll just throw in at this point while Mary's looking for it, that I intend to oppose this application based on subsection A of 47-24.6.8.4 because I am not certain that this property is no longer needed for public purpose.
And yet, we heard, and yet, we heard, we heard from Ben who said that if it were opened, it could pose a safety issue, which I find difficult. So, I think, I think that if I'm with Coleman and Shari, I don't know that we can do this, but taking, just kind of listening to all the conversations, I'm wondering if we could propose to the city commission, if that's what we're doing, Shari, that we, that we don't approve the vacation, but we do approve based on keeping the encroachment agreement in place for the time being. Because with a status quo, if, for those of you that haven't driven this, you are, you know, that short entrance onto Progresso, and until the city studied that further, I think it would be foolish to just open that street tomorrow, especially in view of Ben's comments.
My suggestion would be this is just a vote solely on the vacation. And so, the encroachment is something. And so the encroachment is something, um, outside of your purview as far as advising the city whether or not to, um, uh, terminate it. And so my suggestion is just to vote on the vacation itself and, uh, maybe afterwards, if you'd like to do a communication to the city, you may do so.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have, I, I see no other hands raised. Um, I have closed the public hearing, or if I didn't, I do so now. Um, do we, uh, have any motions? Mary, do you want to make a motion?
Uh, do I want to make a motion? I, I'm trying to think what the motion is that I want to make. Um, well, I'm just going to do it in the affirmative and move to, um, vacate and people can vote it up or down.
I'm being told, I'm being directed from city staff to advise you, Chair, that the applicant is, would like to say something.
Who's speaking? I'm sorry, who said that?
Deana Gray, uh, attorney for the applicant.
Okay.
I, um, I just wanted to address a few points that were, or a few of the highlights or points that were brought up by, uh, some of the property owners. And one was, um, regarding, uh, staff originally wanting to, um, deny the application or not move it forward. However, uh, staff suggestion was to provide an easement to, uh, to the city, which would provide a pedestrian easement and, uh, for utilities and then also for emergency vehicles. So right now, as it stands, none of those things are in place. It is not serving a public purpose as it is right now. So actually by, uh, formally vacating it and giving the easement back to the city, this city would be preserving a, a pedestrian easement and would be preserving, um, an area for emergency vehicles and for utilities. So in actuality, the vacation would be it, uh, giving the easement back, which would actually be serving the community in a public purpose. So I wanted to just, uh, point that out and also, um, in terms of, um, impacting the alley. Now, it, I think there might have been some confusion on that one, not, not with the board, but with what was being, uh, spoken to by some of uh, the individuals that were objecting is that, um, you know, there won't be any change in the traffic patterns. I mean, this has been closed off for over thirty years, so it's not going to impact anything. It's, it's status quo. It's, we, it's staying the same. So I, I just wanted to, um, point out a couple of those things. And then in terms of site plan, um, you know, that's something that when, uh, there was a site plan that we were simultaneously working together, moving forward. But because of COVID, that's why that had dropped back and that's why you're not seeing that here today. However, we are, um, committed to providing that easement to the city. So that would be maintained for pedestrians and for public purpose.
Uh, thank you. I still have Mary's hand up. Mary, did you have something to ask?
Oh, I thought you wanted me to put a motion forward, so that's why I put my hand up. But if somebody else has a hand up, like you can go to them. I don't know.
Just make sure that we don't have any other members of the board wishing to speak on this item. Is there anyone in the commission chambers wishing to speak on this item? I'm looking for waving hands. I don't see any, and I have no hands raised in the chat box. So Mary, it's all yours.
So I'm going to follow through with what I was doing, um, when we did and just do a mo- uh, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Do you approve with staff conditions, Mary?
Yes, 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 I do.
Is there a second? Who was the second?
Jay.
Thank you, Jay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Chair, this is Tricia Logan. I'd like to bring to your attention that one of the attendees has their hand raised.
Who is it?
It's Antonio Coratolo.
Okay, so Mr. Coratolo's attorney has already spoke and Mr. Coratola has already spoke. And I have no members of the board wishing to speak or ask questions of Mr. Coratola. So, um, Shari, uh, are you comfortable with me proceeding to a vote?
I believe you closed the public comment period. I think you did, but if not, I think you did. We're done.
Okay. Apologies to Mr. Coratola. All right. Um, I do not see any hands raised for discussion on this motion. So Bridgette, we are ready to go.
Okay, Mr. Um, Scheckman.
Yes.
Ms. Scott. Ms. Scott?
You're muted, Jay.
Mike.
I apologize. I apologize. No.
You vote no? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Cohen?
No.
Vice Chair Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
No.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
No.
Mr. Weymouth?
No.
Chair Moss?
No, for reasons previously stated. Um, motion fails. Um, six to three. Uh, thank you all. Moving on to item number five, P L N U L D R two thousand one triple zero one. Um, this is the transfer of development rights.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Chair and members of the board. I'm Tricia Logan. I'm the Historic Preservation Planner in the Department of Sustainable Development, and I'll be giving this presentation to you tonight on the Transfer of Development Rights Program. This program was presented to you, um, in the, at the October Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, and it was deferred from that meeting, uh, for, um, sorry, for the board to address, for the board to spend a little bit more time to take a look at this proposed ordinance and for staff to address three points that the, the board outlined. Those three points were to look at providing education about available incentives um, during the designation process to potential historic landmarks and to look at adjusting the ordinance to allow for historic designation to be revocable if T D Rs are not approved. And also to reach out to additional cities to get feedback on what is or isn't working. So this presentation will, uh, address each of these points. It will provide an overview again of the T D R process and then provide a few examples of some calculations. So just to give you an overview of, uh, the research that, that staff did to prepare this ordinance. Starting in two thousand eighteen, uh, staff did reach out to the Planning Advisory Service uh, through the American Planning Association for an inquiry, um, to get resources of best practices for T D R programs. And staff reviewed those, those resources and utilized them in preparation of the ordinance. They al- we also used the Broward County Land Use Plan to, um, to serve as a guiding document in the preparation of the T D R ordinance. And we held several calls with, um, different municipalities throughout South Florida, um, and regionally to gather more information. So we talked to the City of Sunny Isles and the City of Miami Beach and more recently, the City of West Palm Beach. All of them reported having successful programs uh, for their T D Rs and, um, and with the City of West Palm Beach, they reported that they, they typically have three transfers per year. That's their level of success. And, uh, primarily those transfers occur in the downtown master plan area. Uh, there have been several, uh, up, uh, previous reviews of this ordinance. So the Historic Preservation Board did review this ordinance in August and they voted unanimously to support it. Uh, generally, they were, um, happy with the, the proposed ordinance, but did have questions about the actual process and how it would work, but that is something that's not necessarily written into the policy. They were asking questions on how, uh, how historic properties would find out about this program and how they could qualify for, um, for it. And then how buyers could find those historic resources and make the transaction. Um, and that will come later. Uh, we did reach out to the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Association uh, multiple times and offered to do a present- presentation and we weren't taken up on that offer. We also made the same offer to the Sailboat Ben Civic Association, which was also declined. And we reached out to interested parties over the summer, but only heard back from, um, one member of that group who we held a, a conference call with. Just to give you an overview of other incentives that historic preservation has besides the T D R program. We do have several other things that, um, a historic resource could take advantage of. We have, uh, property tax exemptions or, um, commercial properties, but also for properties that are doing improvements. And then we also have several different exemptions that, um, properties could qualify for. And several of those were approved this year that you actually are probably familiar with. And we get that information out several different ways. Sometimes we're contacted directly and we email this, um, this comprehensive handout that describes all of the incentives. We also have a YouTube video that's available that talks about all of the incentives that are available. And that is, um, actually on the Fort Lauderdale Historical Society's YouTube page. And then we also have this information on our website for historic preservation. So I'll get into a little bit, well, I'll get into the overview of the actual T D R program and its process, um, which we covered last time, but as a re-review and to get in a little more detail. Um, there are basically two steps involved with the process. The first step is the certificate of eligibility. And that's applied for by the sending site. And then the second step is the certificate of transfer, which is the actual real estate transaction between the um, historic sending site and the receiving site. And that's for the transfer of any unused floor area or density from the historic resource to the new development. So for the certificate of eligibility, um, it is a calculation. That calculation is conducted, uh, well, it's information that's provided, um, by the applicant and it's verified by staff. And the, the certificate of eligibility is issued by the Historic Preservation Planner. And in the draft ordinance, um, it does describe that it, it expires after eighteen months after the issuance. And there is a right to appeal, um, the determination by staff. To give you an overview of the properties that are identified as historic, this is a a map of all of the historic landmarks and the historic districts that are in the city. Um, this map is available through our online G I S system that can be utilized. And then to address, uh, one of the points that was brought up by the board at the last meeting, uh, regarding the revocation of a, um, a historic landmark designation if the transfer of development rights doesn't go through. Uh, this is a proposal as an option to include in the updated, in an update to, and to the ordinance. Um, and this would be allowing properties that are qualified for historic designation for the certificate of eligibility. And so you can see there's four different points that, um, would be used as criteria for potential um, historic resources to apply for. And they don't have to become designated, but if they choose to, um, proceed with a certificate of transfer, they would have to become designated before applying for that. So one of the items that's listed is if it's, uh, identified on a recent architectural resource survey as a contributing property or as a potential landmark and something that we're actively doing through, um, support from the state of Florida is surveying the, uh, the City of Fort Lauderdale for potential historic resources. So you can see on the left-hand side, an outline of some of the, the recent surveys that were conducted. And then the, the second step of this program is the certificate of transfer. So this is the actual sale between both parties. Um, involved with that application is a verification of eligibility, a verification of the fact that all criteria has been met. And then, uh, this application goes through the Development Review Committee, um, as part of its process. And then any rights that are transferred to the receiving site are transferred in perpetuity. There are some criteria that's outlined within the proposed ordinance for the receiving areas. So, uh, the land must comply with the applicable zoning district requirements of the U L D R. And then any receiving area cannot be located on a barrier island or within, uh, an adopted adaptation action area. And then all receiving areas must also comply with the, um, FAA regulations. So just as a, an overview of where those receiving areas are located, this, um, is showing receiving areas for density. This is the unified flex zone. So the areas that are shaded in brown or it depends on your screen, but on my screen, it's brown, but those areas would be receiving areas for density. And then this is a kind of the lower half of the city that shows that. And we can come back to this if you'd like. And then this area in the Uptown Urban Village is also eligible for receiving density. The other side of, um, the ordinance also allows transfer of floor area. So this map shows, um, some of the areas that can receive floor area throughout the city. And then this is another map showing the northern side of the city. And then again, Uptown Urban Village can also receive floor area. Uh, some of the criteria that's required for, um, the receiving sites is that it obviously must be in a receiving area and meet storm evacuation standards. That it's compatible with adjacent and planned land uses. There's no outstanding leens or violations. It cannot negatively impact historic resources or environmental concerns and must also have adequate public facilities. So that's, those are things that would be also verified um, when a project actually came through for approval. And this is just an overview of, um, the, the densities and, um, heights that are allowed through this program. So the chart on the top shows, um, the heights that are, are permitted, uh, by right. The maximum height is listed in the first column. The second column shows the additional height that's allowed, um, with T D Rs. So you can see it ranges between one story of additional height to four stories in the Uptown Urban Village. And then next to that, the final column on the, on the right-hand side shows the maximum height that's allowable if you were to go through a conditional use process. On the bottom, the chart just outlines the fact that, um, the maximum density throughout most of these areas is fifty units per acre. But, uh, with the T D R program, you can add an additional ten units per acre. Uh, just to give you an overview of, um, some of the requirements that are listed towards the end of the ordinance about development permits. Um, there are some requirements that, um, are, are drafted as criteria that um, would be met if app- applying T D Rs to a project. And I know last time we talked a lot about what types of projects would go through P Z B review. So um, that would include mixed-use developments, that would include, uh, a request for residential units through flex, uh, any rezoning application, parking reductions, and then any, uh, properties that, um, include, well, certain properties that include a waterway use. And just to give you a couple of examples of calculations, um, this slide shows, uh, one of our historic resources, which is the, um, Fire Museum, which is within Sailboat Ben, but it's uh, designated as a historic landmark. And you can see some of the data, the zoning data that's listed out. And then the sample density calculation that would be using the existing acre, um, acreage and multiplied by the permitted density and then subtracting the existing units. And in this case, it's used as a museum, so it doesn't have any units on the property. And then just as a, a picture example, the next slide shows, um, how you would transfer those, those, um, units. So in this case, ten dwelling units would be available to transfer. And they could be transferred to a site that is one acre. They can normally have thirty-five units per acre, but with the use of the T D R program, they add the ten additional units for a total of forty-five units per acre. There is a minimum. There is a minimum unit size of 4,400 square feet. So just keep that in mind. And then here is another example of a calculation, but for floor area. So it's the same, the same lot. It's the Fire Museum again. And it would take the approximate development. Well, in a real situation, you would actually have measured drawings showing the developable area. And you would take that and multiply it by the permitted height. And then subtract that by the existing building square footage. And that would be the amount that you would have available for transfer. And so this is just an image showing taking that floor area and taking it over to a receiving site to incorporate it into an additional three stories. So that concludes my presentation with my overview and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Tricia. Comprehensive presentation. Thank you so much. Oh, I can hear myself at the commission chambers. I hope it doesn't sound that bad. Okay, so is it the, I mean, this is a staff presentation, so do I need to ask that we make the staff report part of the record?
I'm moved.
Second, Jackie?
Sure.
Thank you. All in favor, I?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? I see no opposition. So I do have a hand or more raised in commission chambers. Who do we have that would like to speak on this item?
This is Jay Shaktman. Tricia, if you could please take us back to the slide with the conditional use heights. And yeah.
Yeah, I will get there. This one?
Thank you. So I'm trying to understand. Let's start with UUV. That, anything already zoned UUV can already get up to 150 feet through conditional use. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the maximum height that they'd be allowed to get with TDRs would be 45 feet on top of 75. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so why would anyone go through the process of procuring TDRs and paying for them when, instead of just seeking a conditional use?
The conditional use is an additional process that an applicant would have to go through. And my planning colleagues can probably explain that a little bit more better than I could as far as what the process entails. But with the TDR program, it would just be the purchase and the, the real estate transaction. So potentially, you know, it could be timing.
Okay, I would just like to point out to the board that that example carries through, I think, to almost every single one of these districts.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Do we have any other members in the commission chambers wishing to speak on this item?
I have more things I'd like to.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jay. Go ahead.
It's okay. So I, I, I think that staff has come up with a novel idea of allowing, if I am saying this correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Trish, Tricia. Parties which have are already identified in architectural resource surveys or as part of the state historic resource office that those can seek and certificate of eligibility prior to designating their property as historic. Is that a recommendation? Is, or is that some, a change that you've made to this?
The current draft doesn't incorporate the change. It's an option for the planning and zoning board to consider.
Okay, I like that. I think that's a novel idea. But I think that there are two, you know, glaring issues that still remain with this proposal. One is that sending property only has 18 months to send their TDRs upon receiving the designation. So my concern is we're all here to try to create an incentive for people to designate their property as historic. Now that this incentive will be out there, we're basically incentivizing people to not designate their property historic to get TDRs until they can already find a receiving property. Because why should I start the clock on myself? Unless I already know that I'm going to have somebody to trade these TDRs to. So I think that's a fundamental issue with this.
If I may interject, if I may interject, this is Shari. The code doesn't say that actually. The proposed revision to the code that, that we have for TDRs, it actually is a calculation. You're submitting a calculation to the applicant and it's a certificate of eligibility. That's what expires in 18 months, not the transfer. So it's a calculation of what you may be entitled to if you go ahead and move forward with the certificate of transfer. So the, the 18 months is a certificate of eligibility, which is the calculation of the development rights that you could possibly have. So that's the difference. The TDR itself, the, when you, once you've transferred it, that is in perpetuity.
So, so that's helpful. So if I am a property owner and I seek a certificate of eligibility and I obtain one and 18 months go by and I have not found somebody to receive these, I then lose that ability. Can I then go get another certificate of eligibility?
Yes, you can, because the issue with the 18-month limitation is that the code can change. So therefore the calculations will change. So we can't have that in perpetuity. It would be incorrect.
Okay. So then the other issue, I think that that makes sense. I think that the other issue is of receiving property. Once they receive these TDRs, can no longer send those to another property in the future. I think that would cause trepidation among, you know, somebody who plans on doing some type of development throughout the city that they, that they might go through this process and you know, end up purchasing something that if the plans change on their development, they can no longer then transfer somewhere else. So I would recommend that these changes be made before we pass, pass this on to commission.
Okay, I just want to, Jackie, I know your hands up, but I do have to ask if there are, we still have the public hearing yet to go. But are there other, other members of the board in the commission chambers that wish to speak on this item? Hearing none. I think I'm going to open it up for the public hearing if Mary and Jackie are okay with that. Okay.
Okay.
Catherine.
All right. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Madam Chair, Robert Lockery, who is in attendance in the commission chambers, is wishing to speak. And we also have Courtney Crush via Zoom wishing to speak on this item.
Thank you, Yvonne, I think. Who's up first?
Robert Lockery is at the podium.
Sorry, Courtney, I'm already here. All right. All right, I'll be very quick. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Robert Lockery, on behalf of myself, I don't represent any clients tonight. So first of all, I just want to say a couple of things. There's really nothing in this ordinance to oppose. It does no harm if it passes tonight and ultimately at the commission. I don't, I really don't see a downside, so I want to make that clear. Secondly, I think it's very important to acknowledge the amount of work that city staff has put into this. Remembering that it's not like they came up with this idea on their own. The mayor and the commissioners told them to go do it. It's a very difficult task, given the balance that you have to go through to find a way to transfer development rights. And at the same time, and I know that Shari and the city's legal team has been balancing this, balancing it with legal rights that the cities have and residents have and property owners have. So I have to commend them for what they've done. There's some great concepts in here, in here. I think that the one thing I'll just say from a practical perspective, and I think the members of the board have already spoken or have touched on it. You know, you can always continue to revise things and make them better. I think two of the changes I've already heard tonight, one, which is to allow you to get some sort of certificate, so you know what your property may be worth prior to designating is very helpful. That takes care of one of the concerns I would have as a property owner. You know, why would I even go down? It's still a little scary because once you've gone down to city hall and said, you know, what would happen if you've kind of opened the door to it. But at the same time, at least if you can, if you know that you'll get some development rights that you can just transfer and make that decision yourself, that's, that's good. That's number one. Number two, I think it's important to recognize that you, once you get that certificate, you know, you can use it again. Now, as the city attorney indicated, may make sense that there be an expiration on it. As long as you haven't designated your property, because once you've designated it, then, you know, then there's a real concern is from your own property rights. But if you could come back a year or two, that seems to alleviate that issue. I think the, the next part of that, though, is what Mr. Shaktman just said. You do still have a concern about, let's say, I mean, think about how this all has to align. You know, I have to be willing to designate my property, go down, find out I've got these development rights, and that may give me the incentive to move forward. So I'm like, wow, this is great. I then either go find a piece of property myself, or I find a buyer who's got a piece of property. They then get those development rights. They have them in perpetuity under the way this is written. That's great. But they've now got to go through a process and face neighborhood compatibility, face neighbors, et cetera, to actually use these rights. What if they get turned down? Could happen, happens all the time, right? So they get turned down. They haven't been able to use these rights. You know, wouldn't, wouldn't it be great if they could then sell them to somebody else or, or move them to some other location? Now, I will say the city attorney's right. You're not guaranteed to get that approval. She's, I mean, that is absolutely the way it has to be. Just because I have these rights doesn't mean I'm guaranteed to get my project approved. But that even is more to the point. If I don't get that project approved, shouldn't I still have a value? Or did I ever have a value when I initially began this whole thing? So I think those are a few things that could be done to further it. But as I said, there's really no harm in the way the ordinance is written. Now, it could just be better. I do have two quick little points that I, that just came up in the presentation, just questions. One, there was a slide of the firehouse and how the transfer of development rights would work. If you had 10 extra units and it was described as, you know, that you would go from 35 units per acre potentially to 45 units per acre. I think that may mean actually 10 units. If it means per acre, now we're talking incentives. Like that's something that could really have some real value. And then secondly, I'm still not completely comfortable. It's my own ignorance and I should have talked to staff about this. How we transfer FAR floor area ratio rates, how that converts to stories. You know, most of the place, we know what it means. You've got a certain building, a one-story building. You could build a five-story building. What's that volume? You know, that volume gets transferred. Most places in the city and commercial corridors don't have an FAR requirement. So you're not really stacking on anything else. It sounds like staff is saying, no, we're going to use that in additional floors. That's great. I'm just not sure what that conversion factor is as far as, you know, numbers of square foot to floors. But anyway, again, those are my only comments on the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Courtney, would you also like to speak on this item?
Yes, Madam Chair, briefly. And I'm going to also echo, echo Robert's sentiment about the positive both goals and most of the drafting of this ordinance. In, in reviewing it, both board member Shackman and Robert touched upon the 18 month and I heard Attorney Wallens comment about that being a maximum length of time. Practically, if I'm a, someone who has a certificate of eligibility, I may not be able to find a developer or buyer willing to accept the TDRs until they have a good feel or approved. So I think that the 18 months may be ultimately a problem. And I wonder if there is a way where it could be extended if there were a contract pending or a pending site plan application. Also on the quantifying the development envelope, which is transferable. And I think the examples that Tricia put up on the screen were the mid level residential zoning districts. This board is certainly familiar with the fact that the, a lot of those zoning districts have setbacks that start at half the height down to a performance-based lower number. So I hope that ultimately, well, as this ordinance goes forward, it's clarified, what is your development envelope? Is it the smaller footprint that you're starting with at half the height setbacks? Or if there are things that can be improved and asked for through a yard modification process, is that your development envelope? I think obviously, we all know that many buildings are built with yards that have been modified. And a seller of either square footage or units would probably expect to have that factored into that which they could transfer. The ordinance itself, as it relates to single-family properties, I think that clearly if I have a large piece of commercial property and I want to transfer square footage, I have the ability and leave a very small building on the property. That, that's an upside and I probably have the wherewithal to go through this process. I wonder if there can be increased incentives for single-family homes to go through this process if they have, I don't know, they're, they're on a triple lot or something to that effect. Can, can they actually have the ability to almost transfer a density bump? Because a lot of the character of our established residential neighbors and neighborhoods would be really enhanced if we did everything we could to have someone maintain and preserve an 800-square-foot cottage in Victoria Park. My other comment is on the prohibition of the beach being receiving area. I understand it is not a goal in our land use policy that the beach have more density on it. That being said, there are a lot of architecturally interesting and older buildings on the beach. And I wonder if the city would consider allowing transfers within the barrier island. So if there's an older property on the beach, what would be the harm in the density going a block away? In that case, you wouldn't be increasing density on the barrier island. And those are essentially my comments. It, it's a good step in the right direction. I think going through a couple of examples, if this ordinance is ultimately adopted, will flesh out and allow the opportunity to either increase incentives for a single family and/or refine exactly how you quantify what you're selling and what's a realistic timeline for the receiving property to go through an entitlement process. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. That was Courtney Crush, land use attorney. Jackie Scott.
Thank you. I, I'm very much in favor of this ordinance with, but, but I think that we can actually make it better. And we can provide more of an incentive for people to do historic preservation. I hate to have this ordinance pass just the way it is and not, not make it better, not make, not, not create more incentives. So what I'm interested in, in, in talking to the board about is if you have a single-family home and that single-family home is on a, a double lot that's RC 15 or a higher density and you want to designate it historic, and let's say that that lot allows you to put on four townhomes, for example, and you want to use a TDR. I would like to see the ordinance be able to state that not only do you get the transfer of the difference, but you include the original property. So if I can put four or five units on that one lot, I don't want to see the historic property be eliminated from the transferable rights. I think it's more of an incentive to give them an additional unit, which is the one you're saving, right?
So you want to give them more than they have?
I want to give them exactly what they have.
Well.
The way this ordinance is written, if I save that house, okay, and this is where I can do four units, I'm only going to transfer three. This to me is all about giving people incentives to do historic preservation. Because now they're going to, with, right now, they've got a buildable lot of four units. So they're going to make a lot of money developing it. But if they want to save the house and they don't want to, you know, they want to look at.
So like, for instance, Shepherd Estate, if it hadn't already been developed as it has, you'd have the main home.
Right.
But you'd have the other units as well.
Correct. And your TDR.
With you.
Include the main home. I mean.
I'm with you.
Why subtract it? Okay, in the, in the.
But what if it was an apartment building? Jackie, Mary, hang on. Mary, hang on. Jackie's still speaking.
I wanted to ask her a question. Okay.
Go ahead, Mary.
What if it, what if it's like an apartment building? How would you handle that, Jackie?
Same, well, an apartment building, that would be probably looked at as a commercial property and.
You're only talking residential.
Well, I'm giving you the example of a residential, single-family, how I'd like to see that work. On a commercial property, let's say that you've got a historic building in a high-density zoning. The historic building's only three, three stories high, but now they're allowed to go 10 stories high. Well, they should have the ability to, to, to. Well, they should have the ability to, to, to transfer not only the three stories as it relates to floor area ratio, but also the seven more that they could get, which would give them 10, which, which would get, I want to include everything. I don't know if I'm articulating it correctly, but I don't want the existing historic property to count and eliminate what the total really could be.
So, may I, may I interrupt for one second?
Yeah.
Bridget, your hand is up.
I, I was wondering if you wanted to close the public portion, public comments, or if it's not necessary.
Well, it is necessary, thank you, the public hearing is now.
That's what I was going to say, thanks.
Okay. So, my understanding, you guys, is in, in the city of Miami, they did like 10 TDRs that were sold to private people who have continued just to keep them and are saving them. I, I think it's, I think it's something that could be very valuable for both sides of the aisle here, for the development community as well as the historic preservation community. But, but I just want to make this the best tool that we can make it, and I don't think we're there yet.
Thank you, Jackie. Mary?
Actually, I was going to ask Courtney a question, but I'll just hold that. I try, I think the staff has done it.
Courtney is here.
I, I am, Madam Chair.
So were you, were you proposing that on the barrier island, you would have some kind of restriction that if you designated a property on the barrier island, you could, you would, you could use those rates on the barrier island, but you couldn't like do something in Coley Hammock and then transfer that to the barrier island?
Correct, I was just wondering if that, that seemed like as if it could make sense and would not be an increase in the density on the barrier island. So yes, that's what I was suggesting.
Okay, I just wanted to see that, okay. I, I feel like staff's done a great job on responding to everything that we asked them to last month, and I'm concerned that we could keep adding to this forever. And I think Jackie's ideas are really good, and I, I thought some of what, you know, I thought Courtney and Robert made good points. I'm sure as the rest of the board speaks, we'll hear many other good points tonight. What I'm wondering is if we can, and, and the interest of getting this done, so we can start to use it, if we can send it to the commission with some suggestions for staff to look at before it goes to the commission. I don't know how that would work, Shari, not necessarily amendments, because we haven't had time to research them.
Sure, you can give us suggestions. The only thing that I, I'll just, the guidance that's provided in the Broward County Land Use Plan basically provides that we should utilize TDRs for unused or unbuilt development rights, so not for used. So that's not an option at this point, but we'll be glad to take your comments.
I, I just, I just hate, Mary, to see this move forward without some real changes to make it a better ordinance, because it's not like we're going to come back and visit this next year.
Jackie sounds like she should make a.
So, who's speaking?
Mike Weymouth.
Hi, Mike, go ahead.
I was suggesting that maybe Jackie make a motion.
Mike, speak up.
He wants me to make a motion.
Oh, well, okay, so I just have one thing to say. I think that this process has provided the commission with just about every sing, it's been a well-reviewed proposed ordinance, and I think at this stage, there's only one thing to do, which is to pass it on to the commission, which, by the way, is in another two public hearings. And I don't think we are ever going to make it perfect, Jackie, so I intend to support it. I, I still have several hands raised, Mary, Jackie, and Commission Chambers. Is there anyone that wishes to speak further?
Yes.
Jay?
Yeah, my, my take is that we're, you know, we've pointed out, I, I, some, some issues. I, I, I don't, I am also extremely appreciative of all the hard work the staff has put into this, but I think the example Robert gave about, you know, receiving these and not getting your project approved, and then not being able to send them somewhere else, that's a glaring issue. I think, you know, I think the fact, the, the item that staff, you know, presented to us that alleviated our concern about properties designating, being designated as historic, and then not getting these TDRs, I think that's a great suggestion. I would love to see these items incorporated into actual resolution that our board can then pass on in a non-sloppy way to the commission.
I agree.
Thank you, okay. So I, I, do I have, I, I think we're, I think we're ready for a vote.
Wait a minute.
So are we moving to defer? Are we moving to, is someone making a motion?
We don't have a motion on the table, Jackie.
I'd like to make a motion, I'll make a motion, but before I make the motion, did you guys read the, did you read all the commentary from Ralph Brooks that was sent to you?
Jackie, just move us along, please.
Okay, I, I make a motion to defer until next month, and let staff look at these recommendations, only because I think Jay is right. We need to pass this along to them with the changes that we all, as the planning board, agree with, not just pass it on and deal with it again. So I, I hope that you'll support another defer until staff can look at the really good suggestions that have been made tonight.
All right, Jackie made a motion to defer, is there a second?
I'll second.
Who was that?
Mike Weymouth.
Thank you, Mike.
My, Jackie, my only question is 30 days enough.
Absolutely.
I, I, can I just, can I just?
Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes, I'm, I'm questioning, you know, I feel like staff's worked really hard in the last month, and I think Mike, Mike has a point. You know, rather than deferring this every month, do we want to do a couple months and get time to write these up the way that all of the people that have spoken tonight have spoken?
Are you offering an amendment to the motion?
Are you asking that out?
Huh? Mike, is that you?
Who is she asking to amend the motion?
I'm asking if Mary wants to amend the motion by extending whatever number of months.
I'd only just like to ask staff how much time they need to do what Jackie and, and others have proposed tonight. And if they can do that in a month, that's great, I'm for it. And if they can't, I say let's not keep doing this every month and putting them through the same drill.
So. Tricia, do you want to respond to that?
Sure, this is Tricia Logan. A lot of the points that have been brought up just don't agree with the Broward County Land Use Plan. So I think that's how we will conclude our research. It, it just keeps circling back to what the Broward County Land Use Plan outlines, what we're permitted to do in establishing this type of program. And most of the points just don't let us move in that direction.
So.
At that guiding document.
So. A number of months would make no difference.
I don't believe so.
Madam Chair, I don't think so, but if you all want, my suggestion would be you can give us what your recommendations are and include it in your motion, and we can definitely take a look at it in between now and commission, because I, I can't promise you that next month we won't come back with the same thing. It's just, we have, we're, we're what the Broward County Land Use Plan provides.
Jackie?
I, I just am not comfortable with the idea that there's no solution to these good ideas. It doesn't work in my brain.
I, I understand, okay. So is there a motion?
There is.
I made a motion.
Yeah, there was a, a motion for an extension, right?
For 30 days.
And did we have a second?
Yes.
All right, so Bridget, we're ready.
Okay, Mr. Cohen?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Furtick?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
No.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
No.
Mr. Weymouth?
Yes.
Mr. Shackman?
No.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
You're moss.
No, motion carries five to four. Okay, so under number five, communication to the city commission, does anybody have anything under communication?
Chair, Trish is, Tricia is trying to say something.
Yes?
Could the board provide specific direction for staff and recap which, which ideas they would like us to research?
Tricia, I, I would, I would point you to Jackie and Mary's comments. Jackie, do you want to comment?
Yeah, I want, I want the staff to give the ability to count the existing historic buildings in the current density in the floor area when doing TDRs, not subtract it out.
Just to be clear for the record, that's not an option under the Broward County Land Use Plan, so that would come back exactly the same. Are there any other recommendations?
I would just say, I, and, and, and I am, I deferred this as a courtesy because I think a lot of ideas were brought up tonight. So I would say review the minutes, and if in a month you tell us you've done everything you can do, then we know which direction to proceed in. And, and again, I want to commend you, I know you've spent many, many hours on this. So I, I just, I just, I would just refer you to the minutes.
Chair, if I.
Thing workable, then it's workable.
I, I would recommend that the, the two items that we, that nobody really spoke against as, you know, not making sense. For example, the, the suggestion that you staff had made about contributing properties that are on the state register, you know, that those can seek a certificate of eligibility prior to designating it's historic, let's put that in the resolution, actually, not a suggestion. Like, let's put it in the resolution.
Jay?
Yes, and the other item was on the ability for a receiving site to then be able to send the TDRs to another receiving site in the future. Let's put it in the resolution.
Okay, terrific. Moving on to item number five, communication to the city commission. Do we have any, there's a hand raised in the commission chambers. Does anyone have comment on communication to the city commission? The hand is down, okay, seeing no hands raised, moving on to for the good of the city. Does anyone have anything for the good of the city? I have no hands.
Chair, Chair, we have a presentation under the good of the city from the Public Works Department.
Okay, great. We're ready.
Mauricio, if you could get Tom, Igor, and Raj into the speakers' forum.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board.
Good evening.
Good evening, and I have, this is Raj from Public Works, and I am here with Tom Lawrence, who is our project manager too, and also Igor, who is our project manager too. And Tom has worked in the DSD before, and many capacity letters were signed by him, and, and, and Igor is still, is there. Now, before I start my presentation, I just want to, you know, state that I'm having terrible problems with my internet and computer access, so I'm using my, my, my phone. So if I, you know, if I lose connection or something, I didn't hang up on anybody, so just please.
You're coming across clear.
Okay, thank you so much. So I'm going to, we have essentially, you know, we have, we have come up with, with the two, two figures to explain the capacity issues. The first one is the wastewater capacity and the, and the collection system, and the second one is related to the water distribution system. We have not prepared any, any figures or any diagrams or any pictures for waterway quality. It's an extremely broad area, so the intent here is to try and keep it more interactive such that you can ask questions and we will try to answer as best as we can. And if we don't have your answers, then we are going to provide you with those answers. So, so let me first start with the, with the wastewater collection system. So if somebody can bring it up on the screen. Okay, great. So essentially, when you look at the wastewater system, it is, it is, it's, it's a three-part system. The first one, and they are all shown in circles, it's a collection network, the transmission network, and then the treatment network or the treatment volume. So the first one is the collection network. Anytime you have a development come before you, it is shown diagrammatically that, you know, how the, how the water, how the wastewater, the sewer from these development, they get into, from the laterals to the gravity mains. And from the gravity mains, they travel to the manhole system. From the manhole, they get into the, and that, that, that forms what we call the collection network. So essentially, the new development or redevelopment or an existing facility, they generate their sewage, it goes through their laterals, and then it gets into the, the gravity mains that are, in, in almost all cases, they are a city, a city-maintained system. And it goes into the manhole, and from the manhole, that's when it gets into the second phase or the second network, which we, which we call the transmission network. And the transmission network consists of the pump stations, and, and that is, that is something that is, and, and then from there, it goes into the, the, the force main. So that is, that is the second, you know, that is the second network. And, and the third network is, it, it goes into the treatment plant, and then the sewage gets treated, it gets into the, the, the pump station, and, and another pump station, but that is essentially to pump the water deep into the injection wells. So I'm going to come back again to the first one, what the staff does. So when a new development comes in or redevelopment comes in, they use a desktop model to evaluate the gravity pipe capacity. And that is something extremely important, because that is the starting point. And they want to, they make sure through their desktop analysis that whatever volume is going to be generated from the new development, that is, whether the pipe is capable of handling that. The, the range for the pipe flow is, you know, anywhere between 50% to 70%. And so anytime they hit that threshold, then the staff determines that the size needs to be increased, and they will not approve the project until the improvements are made. Once it goes through that system or the approval process, then the next, next verification the staff makes is through the pump, the, the pump station or the sewer pump station. And the important element there is the pump runtime, that becomes the parameter, that how much flow is coming in. And normally, the, the pump times are established by professional standards, and typically, you don't want your pumps to be running more than 10 hours to 12 hours, maybe, you know, max about 15 hours, but I would say still in the range of about 10 to 12 hours a day. Anything beyond that, then the expectation is that whoever is causing or generating the additional flow, they, they need to work with the city to increase the pumping capacity. And, and that is a very critical element, both for the size of the lift, the pump station, and the pump itself. And, and obviously, related to that is the capacity of the force main system. Typically, we do not ask the developers to increase the force main, and that should be a part of the overall master planning. But in a rare case, if that does become evident, that a development is so large that it is going to cause us to do a re-evaluation of the, of the force main system, then we do not hesitate. I'm not aware that we have asked anyone so far, but again, I've not been here too long to, to say that we have done it or we have not done it. But I do know that in the event it does happen, then we are not going to hesitate to say, okay, the force main capacity is, is, is lagging, and something needs to be done. Once it goes through the force main system, it gets into the treatment plant. Once it goes through the force main system, it gets into the treatment plant of the the sewage is to gets into the treatment plant, and it is to be treated. We have permitted capacity of, and I'm going to, and and Igor and Tom can correct me, I think it is close to about fifty-five MGD. And and we just make sure that anytime, any new development, that this, that they they throw their in or they or they transmit their, their flow, that capacity is not increased. And then from there, it goes into the deep injection well through those affluent pump station. We have got five pump stations, and and those, and and we have got five deep injection wells. They are about, I would say, close to about three thousand feet down below. And each one of them, they have a capacity of about nineteen million gallons. So essentially, we can put into deep injection well about ninety million gallons, although the actual permitted plant capacity is only fifty-five. And I'm using this number, you know, just as an illustration. So we do have the excess capacity, and that is what apparently helps us to combat what could be an INI issue or any unexpected flow that can get in. So this is a, this is a a very quick overview of of how the system works again. I'm going to repeat myself. The collection network is 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 one part that, that's where the 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 first check, they start, make sure that the pipe are of sufficient size. Then we look at the transmission network, which is probably the most critical part in in the sense that we have to evaluate the runtime, the capacity of the of the of the pump station, and also the capacity of the force main. And then obviously, it goes into the 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 treatment plant and the treatment volume. So having said this, I I mean, this is like an overview, and I'd be happy to answer any questions and and see, you know, if 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 it makes any sense in terms of what we have, what we are showing, where the concerns are, and how we handle it, how we evaluate. And we just want, we just want to make sure that, you know, we are clear in how the staff evaluates before a project is approved. So having said that, I'm, I'll be happy to open up for any questions.
Raj, thank you so much. Thank you for hanging around to the end of this meeting to give us this presentation. Do we have any members of the board who have any questions for Raj?
Chairwoman Moss, this is John Bronco. I've got a quick question. Raj, when you guys are evaluating the capacity of these systems, you had mentioned the fifty percent threshold on these gravity systems. When you look at fifty percent threshold, are you looking at just the capacity, the physical capacity, design capacity of that line? Or are you also putting in some sort of factor for the age of the line as well?
Okay, great question, and and I knew that somebody is going to ask that. What what we do is that there are two critical distinction that we need to make, and as the staff makes. There is a capacity element, and there is a condition assessment. So the capacity is what we evaluate, and the capacity is what we determine. And we say fifty percent threshold, I I think the city uses as as we increase our our lining of the pipe for the reduction of influence infiltration. We have, we have increased that to seventy percent. So that means that if the pipe is, let's say, ten inch and ten inch diameter, we make sure that only the maximum flow that can go through that pipe is only seventy percent of that area. The thirty percent we we still leave for unforeseen flows that might come in largely due to the rain event. We do not ask, nor is, nor we are required to do the condition analysis or the condition assessment. And the reason is very obvious, that the condition assessment is essentially a city function, and we cannot force any person to to take care of 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 something that the city is responsible for. It would be something similar to you are, you know, you are, you are an owner of a of a house, and the pipe breaks, and the road caves in, and you are required to say, well, fix it. So so that, a a as a result of that, the the condition is not a part of our analysis. However, if we believe that there could be some issues, we may bring it up. But by, you know, by and large, we don't because the whoever is going to be using that system has already paid into with the belief that the city is going to do the right thing, and they are going to be doing their job, making sure that the system is maintained. Anytime when the, when when the the sewer and the water rates are assessed or they are established, one critical element is there, what what we call R and R, R and R account or the repair and replacement. That amount is required to go into making sure that those pipes are maintained such that they are functional. So I'm not too sure if I answered your question, sir, but we do not, we do not require the the condition assessment of of the pipe. We are only looking at from the perspective of, does it have enough capacity? And it goes, the remaining stuff is essentially the city responsibility for which the owner has already paid into. Now, as far as the extension is concerned, in the event, as I described earlier, was that if we have a, let's say that the the size needs to be increased, then what we do is that we take a look at what we have, and we can ask the the developer to to pitch in or or work with the city to see if we can increase the size of the pipe, specifically if the if the impact fee has not included that element in the, you know, in the fees itself. But if the capacity is there, then then we, because the own, the 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 user has already paid into it, no, we don't, we don't ask them to do that.
Okay, Raj, thank you so much for that comprehensive response. John, do you have additional follow-up questions?
No, I I just, I have an overall concern because obviously, we have been having issues. And I think the reason why we asked Raj, and you did an excellent job, Raj, presenting everything, we asked you to come in here because we, as a board, approve a lot. And we always have those thresholds explained to us. And it just seems like, you know, you guys are telling us, no, you meet the threshold, you're good. We have the capacity, we're good. And then we have these giant pipes exploding across the city, and we're all scratching our heads up here saying, they said it was good. Is there a problem? And I think it's more of the repair and replacement. And I'm trying to figure out a way where we can keep up with the repair and the placement and and have, you know, this whole cause and effect thing addressed somehow when we, as a board, are approving these things. So the capacity is what it is, is fifty percent. But in some cases, that fifty percent threshold may not be enough because of the age of the pipe. And that's why I wanted to bring it before the board. So if you know of a condition in an area where we're approving a project, I would ask that you report those findings to us so that we know what we're considering. Because when we have a developer before us, they don't want to cause a problem like that. I'm sure most developers would be more than happy to to help solve these problems. So if you could point those things out to us when we're approving those projects, if you know of a weak system, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, yeah, what what we we have done is, and 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 now I'm going to take my hat off of, you know, the the approval process or.
Raj, we still have another item behind you, so in in two minutes perhaps?
Okay, all right, so in two minutes, I can tell you that we do have an extremely dilapidated infrastructure throughout. We do have plans, wherever we have done the studies, we can definitely make you aware where, you know, where they are, what they are. But again, I'm not too sure if that if that can impact your approval of the plans, even if we tell you, you know, it is still going to be city's responsibility to make sure that that those repairs and upgrades are made. But we already have planned, and and it is going to take several years before we are there. And and we continue to make progress, but is it, is it perfect? I don't think so. It is going to take quite a while. I would say that it is going to be a rigorous five to ten-year effort before we able to have a good handle on our infrastructure.
Just one point on on that request, Assistant City Attorney Duane Spence. The caution there is that in the quasi judicial process, the board is to evaluate the criteria outlined in the code for approving of pro on projects. And my concern would be the introduction of this additional information that's not a part of that criteria would be subject to challenge any decision based on any additional information that Raj provides with regards to the condition of the system, since that is not a part of the condition for consideration of approval of most of these projects.
Understood, Duane, but these comments will go forward to the City Commission.
Right.
It is possible that they may find a a reason to give staff direction to change some things or or revise some ordinances that might incorporate some of this.
Okay.
Thank you, Duane. Okay, so we still have one last item, which is to vote on planning and zoning board meetings for 2021. You are all provided with a proposed list of meeting dates. Does anyone have any objection to those dates? Mary? Mary, your hand is up.
Do you want a motion? You want a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I move to adopt the the dates.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the dates for 2021?
This is, this one, this is the version that moved to no longer conflict with Passover, is that right?
I'm sorry, what?
I believe the dates had been changed because they coincided with the Jewish holiday of Passover. Is, are those the dates that were the redacted dates that we're referring to?
Chair, this is Ella Parker. That's correct. The only date that's changed is September fifteenth, which the proposed date is for September twenty-second to to ensure that we allow for Yom Kippur holiday to be observed. All the other dates on the fall on the third Wednesday of the month as usual.
Thank you, Ella. Jay, are you good?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear and see no hands, so motion carries. And I I think without, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you, staff, Tricia, moderator, Ella.
Thanks, everybody.
Board members, thank you all.